Okay, good morning, everyone. This is the September 29th, 2020 hearing for the Health Committee. I am Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chair of the Committee. Also, we are joined today by Council President Scott, Councilmember Risinger, member of the Committee. I'm trying to see who else is here. Let me just be... okay, so I think we just... Councilmember Risinger is the only other councilmember I see at this time, but she'll be able to be joining us soon. Also in attendance are a host of representatives from the Council President's office, the Mayor's office, and city agencies. Before we get started, we ask that everyone make sure to mute yourself. When you're not speaking, identify yourself before you speak. Be sure to speak slowly and clearly, especially because some of us, including myself, this morning have internet challenges. And after you're finished speaking, make sure that you mute yourself again. We are meeting to discuss Council Resolution 20-0188R, informational hearing, syringe service expansion, for the purpose of inviting representatives in the Health Department, Police Department, Fire Department, Mayor's Office, Criminal Justice, Law Department, and a host of advocates and community-based organizations to explain the status of syringe service programs in the city and the state. The response to this resolution is Council President Scott, and I'll give him a few minutes to discuss the resolution.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, everyone, for being here this morning for this important hearing. As we know, our city has been experiencing an overdose epidemic my entire lifetime. Losing, now that we are losing more people to fatal overdoses even than to gun violence in our city. But what we have been afraid or unwilling to do, I would say, is to address overdoses as a public health issue. Historically, our city has invested in criminalizing substance abuse and moving people who use out of sight. I call for this informational hearing at the first City Council meeting of the year to understand a few things. What syringe services look like across the city to better understand the role of the Health Department and the Need to Exchange Program, and to learn about the work of community-based providers. I am also interested about how this work has changed and transformed as we continue to navigate COVID-19. This is about starting the conversation about overdose prevention and harm reduction in city government so that we can begin to invest in proven solutions and take action to save lives. This is about us rehumanizing people and understanding that our brothers, sisters, parents, children, and neighbors who struggle with addiction are human and deserve to be treated with fairness and respect while having the access to the support and help that they need. I want to thank everyone again for being here today, and I look forward to learning from each and every one of you presenting and offering public testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Henry, member of the Committee, and Councilmember Clark, member of the Committee. All right, so the... Just to explain the flow of the hearing this morning, we are going to be presenting this information or hearing testimony in a few different groups. So the first group will be existing syringe service providers. The second group will be government agencies that are required to provide testimony. The third group will focus on a holistic approach to harm reduction and syringe service programs. And then we will move to public testimony. So that will be the agenda for this morning. And so first up, I'm going to call on... I didn't see DePaul member, but I'd imagine you're probably deferring to someone that runs the program, so I'll let you take it from here as the representative from the Health Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee. DePaul member on behalf of the Baltimore City Health Department. And I am, in fact, joined by Dr. Victoria Cargill, who is our Assistant Commissioner for Clinical Services, specifically HIV/STD/TV prevention. And then I'm also joined by Mr. Derek Davis, who is our Program Manager for our Syringe Exchange Program, both of whom have presentations that we really appreciate being able to share with you today. And as noted in our Agency Report, we are favorable. We really do appreciate this conversation on this particular matter, which we think is long overdue. So thank you for that, Mr. President and Mr. Chair, for shining a light on this matter. With that said, is it okay if I defer to... I think Mr. Davis will go first?
Okay. Actually, it's Mr. Hunt.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hunt, I'm so sorry. Derek, I'm so sorry. Okay.
My name is Derek Hunt, I'm the Director of Community Risk Reduction and Recovery. I want to talk about the history of the syringe program.
I think we're having some difficulty here. DePaul, can you mute your... mute her? Okay, I think it was coming from yours. All right, Mr. Hunt?
Oh, I can't share my PowerPoint?
I think we can assist with that.
Yes, sir, let me make him a presenter, give me a second. Done, Mr. Chair. He can go forward.
Okay, Mr. Hunt, I think you should be able to share it.
Yeah, what we have is the small problem sharing. Can you see my screen?
Looks like it's connected. Yep, we can see it.
Okay. Guess I can start here. Again, I'm Derek Hunt, I'm the Director of Community Risk Reduction Services through Baltimore City Health Department. We run the Baltimore City Need to Exchange. Syringe Exchange Services Program started here in Baltimore in 1994. We started out with two mobile units. We have four unique sites. Over the years, you can see the progression. Right now, we actually run... We have two vehicles still, but we run 24 sites. We go to about 26 times throughout the years. Throughout the years, throughout the year. Throughout the week, I'm sorry. A little history, Syringe Exchange Services actually started in 94. It was due to transmission rates of HIV in the city. And a lot was due... it was really high amongst IDUs in Baltimore City. At the time, it was by approximately 64%. And so Dr. Billingson, along with Attorney General Joe Leffler, and then Mayor Schmoke, looked into the problem of... Trying to resolve the problem of IDUs and transmission rates, and we came up with Syringe Exchange. Again, at that time, the transmission rate was 64%. We looked in, we started Syringe Exchange with the two mobile units. We started out as a pilot program. They put in $50,000 to start the pilot program. And something that needs to be understood right now, we're still working under that pilot program. Right now, we've got the transmission rates under 7% due to our Syringe Exchange Services. Oh, you gotta do it quick. Okay, in 2016, well, first of all, we were the only Syringe Exchange for the last 24 years, from 2019, 2019-94, up until 2018. Since that time, legislation was introduced in 2016 to be able to met other jurisdictions in Maryland start Syringe Exchange Program. Baltimore County as well as Baltimore City. Okay. Maryland District City passed a law, Senate 29, expanding Syringe Exchange Model, while Baltimore City had these other Syringe Exchange Programs. Baltimore City Health Department, Community Risk Reduction Service Program, an evidence-based harm reduction program, HIV prevention designed to reduce and spread HIV hepatitis to another blood-borne infection. City Syringe Exchange was the only operator since Syringe Exchange and from up until 2016. Governor Larry Hogan signed a Syringe Exchange Expansion Bill. Since that time, eight counties in Maryland, Baltimore County, Anne Arundel, Frederick, Washington, Dorchester, Prince George's, Cecil, Lake Mary, and Howard Counties have approved and are currently funded by the Department of Health and will operate Syringe Exchange. There are four, Maryland Counties, Montgomery County, Harford, Wyomacol County, City funding for capacity, they'll develop the syringe, develop new syringe exchanges. Also, I must say, in Baltimore City, we have three CBOs that have been approved to exchange syringes and become Syringe Exchange Programs in the city now operating. They are Chomp City Care Connection, Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition, and Organization of Hope. We also have two pending programs that are waiting to be approved to be Syringe Exchange Program, which is Spark Center and Healthcare for the Homeless. Differences in laws with Baltimore City and the state, right? It's not a lot of differences, but at the same time, there are some. And I've given you a list of the basic differences. One is confidentiality. Baltimore City runs a name-based program. In 19... 2009, we changed from anonymous program to a name-based. And that was because we was able to, like, look throughout the Health Department and link our clients to different services. This wasn't an easy decision for us because, you know, a lot of people think anonymity is like the main thing with Syringe Exchange. Nobody wants to be identified. And so we did a survey with our clients before doing so, and they were the right way. Now, we're able in Baltimore City to actually link clients that might be out of care, falling out of care for HIV and other diseases or STDs, things of that nature. We're operated by the local Health Department. Criminal liability. Baltimore County is... you have a... You have a card for immunity throughout the state. Baltimore City does not have that. The only immunity they have is within Baltimore City. We're not allowed to do secondary exchange where the state is allowed to do secondary exchanges. Activities in Baltimore County are not authorized by the local Health Department. And I just talked about possession. In the state, anonymous, they use unique identified as opposed to being confidential. They are, again, may be operated by local Health Department or CBOs. State open and approve needed. Criminal liability, secondary exchange activities are not authorized, again, possession outside of specific specified operation jurisdiction. Role of the Baltimore City Health Department in this plan is we're actually... we do consultations because we've been the longest running Syringe Exchange in the city. In the state, we consult with the other jurisdictions. It's opening up Syringe Exchange Programs. We provide a lot of different information to them. Capacity building, technical support, things of that nature. We continue to provide SSP and harm reduction throughout services throughout the city, and we collaborate with a host of different partners, internal and external, internal in the Health Department and external. We provide a lot of... One of the main things we've done throughout... Let me see here. Syringe Exchange Program, although we... The main focus is stopping HIV and other blood-borne pathogens. A lot of what we do is community engagement. We go out to community, not only with the clients that we provide services to, but we engage all the community-based organizations. We've engaged states-based community organizations. We touch base with the community association meetings. We attend those meetings. We have a community liaison. It does all these things. And the biggest thing with Syringe Exchange is building these relationships, not only with the clients that we serve, but in the communities that we go in. And that's a big part of what we've done over the years. We try to treat our clients what we respect, right? We try to let them understand that they're part of this society, right? We are... it's really a lot of just like trying to build these relationships with the community and the clients and letting them know that we're there for them to provide services. We try to provide wraparound services for them. And a lot of the services that we provide on the van is not only this exchange and surrender, but actually going HIV/STD testing, counseling. We make referrals, we collect... We provide immunization, we provide drug treatment, we provide reproductive healthcare services. We provide vaccines, going like flu season, things of that nature. And a big part of what we've been doing now is like providing overdose response. Of course, a lot of our clients come on. It's susceptible to having overdoses. And so a lot of what we do right now is provide overdose response. We give out Narcan, we train them to use the Narcan. And if they use the Narcan, they can come back to the van and receive more Narcan. Some of the related data about our program. Syringe is distributed. You'll see here, starting in 2004, we was exchanging approximately 400,000 syringes. You see this big increase in 2014. We actually started a distribution as opposed to a one-for-one exchange. And you see where we went up to providing actually almost 1.5 million syringes on a regular basis. And that number decreased a little bit in 2019, and that was because we wasn't able to catch a lot of the data and because of ransomware. But actually, as you see, it's gone back up. The other part of that is this year with COVID, you might see a little just not much of a decrease because during COVID, we continue to provide services. And although we're not seeing as many clients, we're giving out probably the same amount of syringes. Registration, as you see right here. You see this big decrease from 2010. During that period, to explain that, we had our database actually crashed. So we actually had to re-register all of our clients. And as you can see, we went back up to a peak. And it was better because we got like real-time information and was able to like register a lot of the clients. From 2010, a lot of our clients had registered multiple times. And so we were able to like clean that up. And you see this... I'm sorry. Yeah, you see this decrease right here? And that's simply because we wasn't able to capture real-time data due to ransomware in 2019, and now COVID. It's been a lot of difficulty in actually capturing that data. But I don't think it's been that big of a decrease in the people that has actually registered with this program. Visits, right here, again, you see this big decline in 2007, and that's because of the data crash. And over the last year, we've seen like kind of a study increase. And you see a really big increase in 2019. And because of ransomware, we kind of dropped back down 2020. And I don't think that was much of like a decrease. Of course, with COVID, we haven't been able to see as many clients each day, but we still continue to give out approximately insane amounts of syringes. A lot of clients just aren't able to make it, and we can't capture the data. Talking about overdose response a little. You see here, when we first started doing overdose response, and we started this in 2004. I think we was the first program in the city or in the state that actually knew overdose response. And we started in 2004. We had a big increase in... and starting out, and then we came down. And you see this flat line here, right, where we didn't do it much? And that's because we just didn't have the funding to do so. In 2014, we received funding, state funding, to provide overdose responses. So you see this really big increase in the number of people trained, the number distributed. And then here, I want to talk about the reversals reported. From 2004 up until 2014, right? We really didn't have a real mechanism to capture the reversals. A lot of our training was done around methadone clinics, and so clients weren't able to come back to the van and report reversals. In 2014, when we received more funding, we were able to get clients back on the van and distribute Narcan. And it was a lot going on for this period. We actually had to shut the program down for a while because when Health Commissioner Jostine came in, he wanted to restructure the program. And so once we got back up and running, we saw a big increase with people trained, kids distributed, and we were able to capture reversals because we had more people coming to the van reporting reversals. And we're not the only person that's doing overdose response. However, right, we can only capture reversals when they're reported to us on our van. Yeah, and we do a really high volume of training and distributing Narcan. Over the years, we talk about what changed a little. First of all, we had SSP expansion, right? And that's what's in Baltimore City. We were able to expand our services tremendously. In 2018, we were able to get more funding to be able to like expand throughout the city so we were able to pick up some sites. Jurisdictions statewide. One of the other changes was legislation change where other jurisdictions could open up Syringe Exchange statewide, Baltimore County as well as the city, as I explained before. CBOs allowed to apply in the city as stated. And we partnered with a lot of those CBOs. And we're really trying to like build better relationships within Baltimore City and know what's actually going on with all the Syringe Exchange. And in real partnership with faith-based communities, that's been a big thing going on now. It's a lot of people, a lot of the faith community, the ventures in our services. And one of the big things we did approximately two years ago, we was able to like build a relationship in one of the churches over in Hounded and open up the first fixed site for Syringe Exchange which was in one of the churches. We've been getting a lot of support from that church and that community. And we're looking to open up and build relationships more in the faith-based community. Some of the limitations and challenges that we exist, that exist, of course, is limited funding. It's been a big problem. We operate off of mobile units. And so we try to like identify high-risk communities, and that's where we take the services to those communities, which has been a large part of our success within Baltimore City. Being able to take the services to the community as opposed to having them come to us. We found out, we did a lot of surveys. Susan Sherman with John Hopkins, they actually did some surveys and found out a lot of our clients don't travel. Probably like out of a six-block radius when we're on a Syringe Exchange. And I think that's kind of changed over the last period because we have a lot of clients that come from outside of Baltimore City, outside of the county, to access services. And hopefully, that'll change. And it's saying a little decline because a lot of other Syringe Exchange Programs are opening up. Access to drug treatment. We have no real... I was just told I might go a little over. Access to treatment, that's been a problem, trying to get people in treatment like immediately. A lot of the clients that we've done where they want to access treatment, if they can't get treatment, then we might lose those clients. And so that's been one of the challenges. And has the collaboration with law enforcement. Not so much of a challenge with that, it's building that relationship. And we've come a long way in that area over the years, a really long way. A lot of law enforcement actually making referrals to the program and talk real high about our program within the community. Coordination of services with CBOs, implementing SSPs and CBO oversight. CBOs within... in Baltimore City, but they're actually overseeing by the state. And so the partnership we have and reporting, we're working on that. And hopefully, we can resolve that issue and build a better relationship. That's the goal. And I don't see a problem with doing that. It's just kind of new at this time. And just to talk about COVID. Since COVID, we never stopped providing services. We was unfortunately able in a position where we had to reduce services greatly in the very beginning. We went down from providing maybe eight hours of service a day down to about maybe four hours, but we never stopped. We started using social distance thing. And so we didn't have that face-to-face contact with the clients. We set about, continue to take the vans out, set shop containers six feet from the van and a table on the other side six feet where we could like have them bring the syringes they've dropped in the shops. It's been a real challenge. We've had some challenges with staff coming up positive, and not so much because of the clients, but just because of the environment now with COVID. And so even right now, we do service because we had a client, a staff come up positive and had to shut down one of our vehicles. And so that's been a real challenge. And clients just being able to get to the van, unfortunately. But even in doing that, we've been giving out more syringes because we understand that clients can't make it to the van. And one thing that I really didn't touch on, and I don't want to take a lot of time, that I really wanted to like get, talk about was wounds that we're seeing within the community. There's a lot of drugs, ethanol mixed with a lot of other things right now that we're seeing, and that causes a lot of wounds. We actually provide wound care where we give out our wound care material, bandages, tape, antibiotic, pointill, say, whatever things of that nature. But again, limited funding has kind of like handcuffed us a little bit because of our better service. And I think that'll do it. If there are any questions, feel free. Again, feel free to talk about that.
So, Mr. Chair, we do have another presentation from Dr. Cargill as well. We're happy to take questions for Mr. Hunt's presentation, but it would probably make more sense to just move on to Dr. Cargill's presentation.
Thank you.
Do I have screen shareability?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm waiting for my screen to pop up. Just one second. Great. Are you able to see that?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Let's see if I can adjust this. Of all the platforms, I must confess, I'm a little bit more challenged with WebEx, so I apologize in advance. And I'm going to, because Mr. Hunt covered many things I was going to talk about, I'm going to be truncating this. If I'm going to quickly, or there are questions afterwards, I'm happy to do so. We've already talked about our syringe support. My goal is really to, first of all, thank you for this opportunity, and then to share with you some of the things that the syringe support services are able to accomplish and put a human face on them. I really do like to personalize things by starting with a case, and I think this one case does say it all. I had been in my position approximately two months when we had a conversation about a middle-aged client that was very well-known to the syringe support staff. He had a long history of opioid use and using the syringe service, but unfortunately had tested positive and was demonstrating signs of active syphilis. Unfortunately, repeated attempts to try to engage this individual and secure treatment for him were unsuccessful. And basically, the client would agree to treatment, and a team would be dispatched to the mobile area. But by the time the team arrived, he would depart the area, incentives had been unsuccessful, repeated conversations were unsuccessful. And so, it was really the collaboration between our STD DIS Services, mobile units, the syringe support van, our spot mobile vans, that we were able to come up with a new protocol for this, and successfully, almost 10 months now after that test, we were able to connect him to treatment and have him treated. We all know, and I appreciate the remarks, as we opened the hearing, the cost and the pain of substance use in our communities. So, one of the most important aspects of syringe support services is really try to make disease prevention. I apologize for the blurriness of the slide. This is from a report I had to copy, but I'm happy to make those visuals available if that would be desired. And really, the takeaway here is to see that you take a look at the rapid trajectory of HIV transmission in the city, which was driven largely, as you heard, by Mr. Hunt, injection drug use as well as sexual behavior. But this was a city that, two out of three injection drug users at its peak were HIV-positive. And now, we know from our most recent data, that has dropped down to approximately bouncing between 6.2 and 6.7%. We also know that we've now been able to see a nice and consistent decrease in HIV cases. These two graphs look pretty much the same. They're not. It still represents a detriment of about 40 cases. So, we were still on track to decrease HIV cases. The other takeaway from this, and again, this too is blurry, I apologize, is from the same report, is to really note the brisk decline in injection drug users and the trends in HIV diagnoses compared to, for example, same gender-loving men, where it has sort of slowly gone and paralleled off, and also heterosexual risk. But we can't forget about other blood-borne infections, and hepatitis C is another big one that's linked to injection drug use. Baltimore City does have the highest number of hepatitis C cases in the state. That rate is about 384.9 per every 100,000 individuals, but this is some older data. The newer data are coming. In 2016 alone, there were 2,002, 14 cases reported in Baltimore City. But I would caution that this is most likely under counting because of the nature of the illness, which can be very mild. In fact, it can almost be like mild flulike symptoms. And because of that, and the types of exposures and how people may be exposed, they often may not think to seek testing. But it has been very closely linked to drug injection, and clean equipment has repeatedly been shown across the decade to decrease hepatitis C transmission. Now, community education is also a very important part of what syringe support services do, and certainly, as has been noted, there's been a sharp increase in opioid use, overdose, and disease transmission. So, obviously, education is critical. And I won't go through all of this, but to remind you that this is an opportunity where syringe support does provide education in groups of any size. There's a wide range of topics, as you see. The education is certainly tailored to the audience, and that, as you heard, establishing a relationship is very critical, and Mr. Hunt and his team do that. But the most important thing I think we can do is to continue to help parents, excuse me, teachers, community members, understand the signs and symptoms of drug use and drug overdose, especially given the more recent projections that between all the drivers of drug use that are now showing and raising their heads again with the COVID pandemic, from isolation quarantine, loss of job, and some states reporting a brisk uptick in opioid use. Education certainly has continued despite COVID. We did have to stop for a while, and there were 33 sessions prior to COVID. There have been calls for education of about 17 in the last three months, so that we plan to resume by October 1. The number of safe-injecting kits distributed year-to-date has been 13,689. But the number I really do want to draw your attention to is the number of naloxone rescues aboard a van a month, and it has a range, but it averages about 497. If you do the math, that means we're doing over 130 a week. Wound care, Mr. Hunt touched on that briefly. As a physician and as a provider, I really do want to emphasize that there are really two types of wounds. We need to heal the wounds of injecting drugs, and this is a sample of some of the materials that we use. But more importantly, the wounds really are external and internal. There are the external wounds such as skin abscesses that can come from skin popping. We see this more commonly in adolescents who are afraid of needles or just being introduced to injection drug use. There are excoriations or deep scratches because drug uses often have side effects, including this constant sensation of itching, boils, necrotizing fasciitis, just a big word for tissue that tends to be destroyed. And it's either because of the fact that foreign particles were introduced, or certain drugs, particularly a drug like Tylenol number three, has been known to do that. In addition to that, we have endocarditis, which is a heart valve infection, lung abscesses, and more. There are also internal wounds, and those include anxiety, depression, suicidality, self-loathing, PTSD, violence, and more. And this is just some examples. I talked about tracts. This is one example of an individual that has tracts on the arm. This is an individual that attempted to inject over the greater saphenous vein, which is a common site for new users, and unfortunately developed a boil. And then, the more severe is an individual who injected in the feet and developed the necrotizing fasciitis. And we have seen wounds where tissue has been destroyed, not only down to tendon, but to bone. This individual required a skin graft. The wounds that are internal certainly can't be seen, but they're experienced, and they're quite deep. There's been an important collaboration with law enforcement, as you heard. My first three months on the job, I really appreciated receiving phone calls from law enforcement saying, you know, "We've been encountering a larger number of overdoses in a particular community. Could you assist with that?" Ensuring that clients have naloxone reversal kits, educating about how to use those kits, and as I mentioned, community education. So, in summary, because I know that our earlier presentation ran over, this is our van out on the block. I'm sure you recognize the picture. But I like to think of what we do in terms of buckets, so that there's injection drug services, which includes syringe support, naloxone reversal, testing, referral, and tracking. Then we move into the community education services, which includes overdose rescue training, drug education, and certainly increasing capacity. And then, finally, the wound care and referral services, because it's more than just wound care, it's support for that. We do see individuals who come on the van with profound wounds, and that clearly exceeds the expertise on the van and really should be cared for. And those individuals are referred to a higher level of medical treatment facilities, such as an emergency room. And so, I'll stop there, and I thank you. And I'll see if I can stop sharing. There you are.
Thank you. Are there questions from committee members or council members for either of the presentations? There are none. I do want to take the time to say thank you for all of the hard work on these programs. I've heard nothing but good things about it, and seem to be a model for others. So, do want to say thank you for that. We are going to move now to, and I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name, Natyana Robinowitz.
Natyana, thanks. Well, thank you, council members of the Health Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm Natyana Robinowitz. I'm the Executive Director of Charm City Care Connection. We were founded in 2009. We seek to to high-quality healthcare and social services. And today, I want to talk about why syringe services matter, not just as an isolated service, but as an integrated service for any program that works with people who are struggling, struggling with drugs, with homelessness, mental health, or any of the challenges that come from being poor in our city. Charm City Care Connection is a harm reduction program, which means that we work with people who are actively using drugs. We meet them where they're at, and we provide services that are based on their priorities, not our priorities for them. We provide syringe services and naloxone as part of our larger programs, which include street outreach, case management, an emergency housing program, and a small, long-term housing program for people who use drugs. And the heart of Charm City has been our drop-in center, which is temporarily on pause, but at our drop-in center, you can get a cup of coffee, a hot meal, new syringes, and you can connect with the case manager. We are located in East Baltimore, and we really operate as part of the neighborhood. We share a building with these places where people who are wanting to stop using drugs can work with a peer recovery coach, or go to a 12-step meeting. And then, we always attend community meetings at the New Broadway East Community Association, and we work with their leadership to support community cleanups and getting syringes out of people's yards and alleys. Many of our staff live in the neighborhood, and we, you know, we really operate as part of this tight-knit community. I think that there's a larger need that we fill as a program that offers syringe services, and that is that we work with people throughout the normal ups and downs of their drug use. We know that people's lives change, and their drug use and housing status changes. And so, offering a spectrum of services that includes harm reduction services, like syringe services, allows us to truly meet people where they're at. And I want to give you an example. So, we met Mr. M. in February of 2019. He was young, he was well-dressed, and he stopped by for a hot lunch while he was waiting to get into his NA meeting around the corner. At that time, he was abstinent from drugs after several years of using cocaine and heroin. He started to come by daily because he liked our company and the food, and the couches were a good place for an after-lunch nap. And our case manager, Aleah, worked with him to replace his driver's license. About two months after he started coming to Charm City, he was kicked out of his transitional housing program for using, for smoking cocaine on a bad day. He instantly became homeless, and he lived in an abandoned condominium up on North Avenue. He started using cocaine and heroin again, and also began selling it. He lost weight, he lost his phone, and he was kicked out of his methadone program. But here's the thing, he never stopped coming to Charm City Care Connection throughout all of this. Our doors were always open to him, and he knew it. He came regularly for lunch and to replace the clothes that got thrown out when he was thrown out of his transitional housing program. He continued to work with our case manager, Aleah, for food stamps. Eventually, we actually hired him as an hourly worker and hosted our drop-in center. And he was still using heroin and smoking cocaine, but he showed up to work three days a week. He actually had the idea of hosting Waffle Friday, where he would make fresh waffles for the up to 50 people in the drop-in center that he would offer with a buffet of toppings. He never stopped at any moment being part of our community despite the normal ups and downs of his life. And I think this example is important because harm reduction programs like ours, like Baltimore City Health Department, like the other programs, Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition and Spark Center, give people services and community that is not conditional. You don't get kicked out when you're down on your luck. And in fact, when you are doing poorly, and you, that's when we really kick in and kick up the services and know that you need more services and more support when you're using drugs more chaotically. And that sounds, I think, very practical and quite common sense. But I wonder, I wonder if the members of the council and the committee today understand really just how hard it is to get services in Baltimore if you use drugs. A crack pipe or a needle will get you kicked out of any of the city-run shelters for several days, if not longer at a time. The majority of employment training programs do regular urine screenings. And then, people might get housing as part of a drug treatment program, but the minute that they relapse or use drugs on a one-off, they will get kicked back out onto the streets. It's like, I think that our city is as if we say to people, "We want to help you if you're down and out, but not if you're too down and out." One of the tactics of the racist war on drugs was to villainize drug users, and especially black drug users in our country. And this stigma, I really think, has carried over into social services sphere, where we continue to punish and penalize drug use and drug users. And I think we need to start to repair some of the harms of the war on drugs. And for us in social services, this means working with people who are actively using drugs, not punishing them, not guaranteeing them help once they stop using drugs, but working with them as they are, which is human beings, as deserving of dignity and respect as I am or any of you are on this committee. So, a question I would pose to all of us in this hearing is, how have, how is it that we've created a large social and behavioral health system that penalizes and excludes people for drug use, which is our most common behavioral health issue in the city? And my ask today is that you consider how the programs that you support discriminate against people who use drugs. How can we move from syringe services as a standalone program to an essential service, essential human service, much like condoms or food distribution? Our city was on the forefront of harm reduction programs as the Health Department presented on in 1994, when Dr. Peter Willington and Mayor Kurt Schmoke opened the first city-run needle exchange program in the country. And I really believe that now is the time and the opportunity for our city to lead again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the committee? And I do want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Phil Henry. Seeing the questions, thank you. And especially for raising those critical points about exclusion from programs is definitely something that needs to be looked into by this committee, and I appreciate you raising the point. Actually, first time I've heard it presented in that way. Mostly for my colleagues, but something that we'll be doing a deeper dive into. Next, I have Harriet Smith from the Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. And it looks like there is also going to be a screen sharing or presentation.
Ms. Smith, you're, you can speak now.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. This is Harriet Smith. I don't need screen sharing. For some reason, our tech abilities have left us only with the sound of my voice, so I hope that's okay. So, I'm Harriet Smith. I use she, her, and hers for pronouns. I'm the Director of Education and Acting Director of Services at Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. It's really, it's a pleasure to talk about some of the ways that we've been creative during COVID and it's really an honor to be able to share some of what we've learned as community-based providers of the past few years. I've been with BHRC since the spring of 2016 and I've overseen our direct services and other program areas since that time. May 6th, if I remember correctly, it might have been the 9th, 2016, was also the day the governor signed a piece of legislation to expand syringe services to both other jurisdictions besides Baltimore City and to other providers besides local health departments. I'm going to come back to that law and sort of the ensuing struggle for its fair application in a little bit. I want to describe some of, some of our services first. So we highly value collaboration, largely because we're very small and that is true of a lot of small programs. We really wouldn't be able to do hardly any of what we do today without partnerships and creative problem-solving. And we really believe that we can do more, even if we have less, through those partnerships and with that collaboration. So we currently collaborate with over six different community-based organizations, churches, urban gardens, clinics, and so on. And we connect and work with, since COVID, 11 consistent volunteers who work at least once or twice a week for anywhere from one to three hours. And then we have dozens more who work more occasionally and then even more beyond that, who engage in remote activities like sewing masks or gathering donations of food and things like that. You'll see a handout, hopefully it was sent to all the council members, maybe, maybe to others as well. It's a, it's a brochure, it's a, yeah, it's a handout entitled Harm Reduction: Safer Use Supplies. Oh, great. It's up on the screen. That's wonderful. Just to kind of show visually and with, I know there's a lot more detail that could go into some of these descriptions, but to show at least visually with a little bit of description many of the items that are distributed in a syringe service program. These are all items that help to prepare drugs for consumption and for the consuming of the drug itself. All of them should be reissued with each use. So it is best not to reuse cookers or any little caps. It is best not to reuse straws for snorting and things like that. All of those can lead to the transmission of infectious disease, but also other infections. And certainly, they can lead to the spread of COVID-19. So I just wanted to show you some of the, sort of the drug-related items that are distributed in most of the CBO, syringe service programs. And then in addition to all of those, we hand out cloth masks, washcloths, soap, hand sanitizer, when we can get some, food items, water. Water is a huge need. It's something I certainly take for granted when I, you know, switch on the tap. But access to drinkable water for, you know, for all of the daily uses that we need it for, including for washing our hands, for injecting our drugs, for drinking, for taking our medicine and all of that. It's just absolutely necessary and that's one of the main things that we hand out in huge quantities. And then anything else to help lift spirits and to help meet some of the basic needs that our neighbors have. So one of the biggest things that I, I'm really glad that Natania touched on is connection to supportive community and connection to somebody who can, you know, be there for you to vent with and for you to celebrate with. Those are some of the intangible things that syringe service programs and other harm reduction programs offer that we sometimes forget to mention as a success. So it's kind of like a tiny window into our services. We provide them outdoors now because of COVID, tables set up in parking lots and sidewalks next to community gardens, in the courtyard of churches, and then out of, out of our cars while we walk around on the sidewalk and, and all of those things so that we can provide, provide them in a way that doesn't put our neighbors at risk for COVID and certainly doesn't put our volunteers and our staff at risk for COVID. So we're really glad we've been able to pivot and provide those services in a multitude of ways with lots of partnerships. So I want to return to the timeline of when the, the syringe service expansion legislation became law. So May 2016, it became law. The Maryland Department of Health jumped right into action, made some new hires for staff in order to usher in this, the successful expansion of syringe services beyond Baltimore City Health Department. Unfortunately, despite our pushing, it was only until August or September 2018 that community-based organizations were allowed to apply for authorization to the Maryland Department of Health. So it took a full two years of, of discussion and struggle to get legal authorization despite the law stating its legality. In 2019, early 2019, Charm City Care Connection and Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition became approved. This would not have been possible if it were not Natania and myself spending a lot of our evenings and weekends asking for volunteers to help us write those applications and so forth to be able to see them through. We were not given support like governmental agencies get funding to, to go through the application process, community-based organizations are not. So Natania and I really tried to push open those doors so that other community-based organizations could come behind us and we really could, you know, see the city that has syringe services integrated into every other service and really works hard to reduce the stigma and the barriers that are constantly set up, knocked down, and then erected again to keep people who use drugs or people who are connected to people who use drugs really isolated and shut out. We started our syringe services, this is speaking for BHRC, we started our syringe services with $200 that was donated by two harm reduction advocates and donations of supplies from a few friends who are diabetic. Absolutely no funding was made available to any community-based organization, even once approved. So we've been operating for over a year doing these services without any government support, even though the legislation that was signed in 2016 did offer funding for the operation of syringe service programs. Again, it's not offered to community-based organizations even once approved. That has changed now and we're really lucky and excited to be able to say that there's now a mechanism that allows us to apply to the Maryland Department of Health for some funding for syringe service programs. We would not have been able to tell you that even six months ago, unfortunately. So that's a relatively new development that we're very excited about. So one thing that really gives me a lot of hope is that despite barriers for service providers and for individuals, our scrappiness and our creativity usually wins out and we're able to do really a lot with very little. A good example of this was during the pandemic that we are currently in. Charm City Care Connection, Spark, BHRC, and other groups came together and, and strategized, knowing that, that we might need to really get, get more creative than normal during this time. We also came together because we saw on Facebook, like any other members of the public, that the government-funded programs were being reduced and in some cases, their sites were being shut down. And we wanted to kind of leap into action. So we, we, you know, typed out the whole list of all of the places that were being reduced and shut down, got out a map and really mapped out where we think, where we thought we could fill in some of the gaps. Over the course of the summer, we are proud to say that we, you know, we are continuing to do our best. Each of our organizations has really taken on more partnerships than ever before and more direct services than ever before, trying desperately to stay connected and get connected to people whose, you know, service providers are needing to drastically reduce their touchpoints and even things like coffee shops where you could use the bathroom are closed now. So people are feeling that isolation in multiple ways. So on our own, with no increase in
So you may want to repeat your last sentence. I think you're breaking up. I think we may have lost you.
Supplies. Other things. And so it took a lot for us to come together.
Okay, I, I think we just heard the last part of that. It sounds like you may be having some connection issues, unless that's just on my end. I don't know if other people can nod if they're... Okay, all right, I see some heads nodding. Okay, so we're having some connection issues. But I think we, we got through most of what you were saying. Can you, can you hear me clearly? Okay. I think we may have lost Harriet. Okay, so let's, let's do this. Let's hold questions for, if anyone had questions for Harriet, let's hold them. And we are going to move on to our next presenter. I do thank you, if you can still hear me. I'm not sure if Harriet's still on yet. To Dr. Susan Sherman, School of Public Health.
Thanks.
There's a presentation as well.
Hi, mostly just chatting and sorry, I'm trying to get the beeping to stop on my computer, so I apologize. One of the, one of the things we get to deal with in these crazy times. So thank you so much for having this really important hearing to all the council member and people that work with them, council members and people that work with them and people at City Hall and community members on this, at this meeting, who work on these really important issues. My name is Susan Sherman. I'm a professor at the Bloomberg School of Public Health and also founder of the Spark Center, which you will hear more about later, from Alex Wilson, who works at Spark and does a lot of work around syringe service programs. I've worked with people who use drugs for over two decades in Baltimore, conducting research and policy advocacy. So now at this point, we've come to the time where we're going to hear a little bit about the evidence, more evidence. We've just heard a lot of evidence. I also worked with the Baltimore Health Department. Derek mentioned we collaborated around naloxone distribution in 2004. Since that time, on and off for 15 years around syringe service program, expanding access in naloxone. My work has largely documented the impact of the lack of access to services for people who use drugs, the role of fentanyl in driving overdose and the impact of violence, criminalization, isolation, and entrenched poverty, and many other things, on people who use drugs, particularly women, who are often just left out of service utilization. As Natania said, so many people, when they have one tiny Pyrex or a glass pipe, can't have a safe place to sleep anymore or can't receive services. So a lot of the research that I, that I do documents the impact of these various structures, like poverty and violence, and then also tries to help organizations design programs that are impactful or as Spark kind of found our own organization that meets them needs, in that case of women. So as we all know and has been said, starting with Dr. Carhill, you know, addiction and chaotic drug use is complicated, particularly in the context of criminalization, which amplifies the impacts of drugs, amplifies people's inability to access services, employment, and in many ways, really cuts their dignity. When I began working with people who inject drugs a long time ago, HIV was really the focus, the main crisis, their crisis in health to them and others. But we know that for over 30 years, studies, thousands of studies from around the world have shown that syringe service programs are a magic bullet, so to speak, and they've been associated with dramatic cuts in HIV, hepatitis B, hepatitis C, even connecting people to drug treatment, if that's what they want, worldwide. And their central function is really enduring. So now we're in the midst of multiple epidemics, a fentanyl crisis. If we had been talking March 1st, 2020, we, this would have been about the role of expanding syringe service programs because of the fentanyl crisis only. And now we have COVID on top of complicated, on top of this, which is also driving overdose. And like every one of us, COVID is a disruptor and it is a great disruptor for people who inject drugs. As has been said, COVID has distracted key HIV prevention and treatment services, as well as local drug supplies. Anybody who works with people who inject and use drugs can tell you that drugs are different. You look at the police data, drugs are now different. There's not as many opioids. People are seeking drugs with other people. It's hard to practice COVID safety measures when there's a scarce commodity out there that you are looking for and using. And so it's definitely been challenging in many ways for people that use. So taking together these trends of increased overdose with fentanyl, COVID's interruption of services, COVID's interruptions of predictable drug markets, even in the unpredictable era of, of fentanyl, these trends suggest that historic gains in reducing HIV could be reversed without truly expanding syringe service programs. And we are lucky to underscore what Harriet and Natania said because I'm, I'm not a part of those organizations directly. It is amazing what they have been doing with a fierce number of people and the Spark Center with a fierce number of mighty few people out there handing out literally hundreds of thousands of syringes, along with the Health Department. But for these organizations, they go and they meet people where they are safely on foot, taking COVID precautions, a lot of times reaching people who do not have access to services or syringes in, in other ways. So I want to go back to where I started, thinking about the impact of not having access to services, to being isolated and doing something every day that is criminalized and you potentially have the, the potential of getting involved in a criminal justice system and we know how that is not good for many aspects of people's lives, including health. Syringe service programs are an effective way to reach people, treat them with dignity and respect, and center their needs in services that are provided for them, to them. So over the past 20 years, my research, like many others, have found consistently that, you know, the people that reach syringe service programs have so many other issues. We found that pretty consistently, almost two-thirds of the people that access syringe service programs are homeless. Lots of people engage in survival sex works. In one of the studies that I did of women, sex workers who largely use drugs, 20% experience hunger weekly. And so just in, so many people don't have access to mental health needs, prenatal care, drug treatment. Syringe service programs really serve as a bridge to these populations. First, to get them clean, sterile syringes and then help them walk through doors of their choosing, whether it be drug treatment, whether it be a food pantry, whatever they need. It really provides a service to many other services in the city. And expanding syringe service programs, the number of, you know, only a few CBOs are allowed to legally provide syringes now, as well as to other syringes, is really important in meeting more people. So I'm going to use a really strange analogy, that of coffee. If you think about norms really were changed, Starbucks, love them or hate them, they're everything. If you think about norms really were changed, Starbucks, love them or hate them, they're everywhere. And not only have they changed the types of coffee people drank 15 years ago, who would have thought skinny latte, no fat, blah, 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 soy milk. So it's changed the way that people, norms around coffee, but also more people drink coffee, more people have access to coffee. And everybody doesn't like Starbucks. Lots of people like the Corner Cafe. They want to continue to support maybe a place they've gone to for a long time. And now they get to have that soy, low-fat, skinny, mochaccio or whatever they're drinking at a service provider or at a coffee provider who they've been to for years. So in the same way, that's why it's so important to think about CBO expansion. That's why it's important for places like Spark and Healthcare for the Homeless, who have pending applications and you're going to hear about, who connect with people around other necessary services, medical services, legal services, to be able to provide syringes. I really appreciate your wanting to learn about the benefits of syringe service programs to fully meet the needs so that, you know, one day, as Councilman Brendan Scott said, you know, his whole lifetime, there have been issues around drug use and HIV and overdose in the city. One day during all of our lifetimes, this, we hopefully will have enough services that people won't have the needs that they have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work on these programs. Are there questions from the committee? I see none. I'm going to note for the record that we've been joined by Councilwoman Slifer, Fifth District, and we were joined earlier by Councilmember Costello of the 11th District.
You, Mr. Chair.
All right, so hearing no questions, I want to thank all of the service providers for your presentation and incredibly helpful feedback today. The perspective that you offer to us from doing the work on the ground every single day, engaging with folks is invaluable to us in both learning what is going well in areas that need to be improved in city government and supporting community-based organizations. So and I also would like to note, as you received, the note that we have been rejoined by Harriet Smith, if any of the committee members have questions as well. I know that part of the presentation was cut short. All right, seeing none. Thank you all. We are going to move to our next panel, which will be city agencies. And essentially, just for the sake of time, I will open each agency, which is asking if you had more from your report, if you want to elaborate on the report, just so that we can continue to move, so don't feel compelled to reiterate everything that was already in writing. With that, we're going to start with the Baltimore Police Department. Michelle is here.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Michelle Wirtzberger, Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I am joined this morning with Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown, who is in charge of the Patrol Support Services Division in the department. We don't have much to add other than this. We are grateful for you having this hearing. This was, I think, it was quite interesting. I think it, your speakers spoke about the challenges that those who are facing addiction have and the need for them to get support and treatment rather than simply criminalizing addiction. And so in terms of the syringe support services, we don't have a big role in that as of right this moment. There are instances where commanders of different districts will collaborate with service providers or the Health Department in strategic locations where they're seeing a lot of folks who are needed of support. But other than that, we don't have, we don't play a big role in this particular arena. Lieutenant Colonel, do you have anything additional to add other than that?
No, I think that you're hitting the key points. One, we don't want to criminalize, of course, anyone that is in need of service or treatment, you know, considering with substance abuse due to families. And from my own personal experience with my own family, I definitely would not want to see them incarcerated because they are challenged. We do know substance abuses, it happens very quickly and it definitely diminishes people's quality of life quickly. We also want to just focus on the fact that how do we connect someone who is in need of a service or need of those type of services with the right resource? And we've worked really good in relationship with the Needle Exchange Program. I can tell you when I was in the Southern District, as a commander, I definitely would use them to the benefit and aid of the community, but also the ones who are in need. We work very closely, my SCOs and I, with our contact at the time for whichever way we would deploy and request for the van to come in certain areas where we were experiencing either overdoses, which of course that was already on the Health Department's radar. But also maybe if we seen like an uptick or something in like burglaries and larcenies, because that just mean that maybe we have someone that we're not reaching who also may need to be connected. I don't have anything else to add except for that I don't look at substance abuse and we as an agency don't look at, you know, someone who has that need for treatment as a criminalizing fact. And where I think the more that we learn again and are educated about harm reduction, it just makes things greater for us as well. And then even in our, you know, training, we're being trained with one House Minister Narcan, along with making sure that we are equipped on the street for that as well. When we do see anyone who's experiencing overdoses before, we can get EMT services to them. So that would just be all that I would have to add.
Thank you. Are there questions for the Police Department from the committee? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. Is there a, I have emergency medical services representatives, but that would be someone from the Fire Department. All right, Mr. Matt, you're up.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chairman Burnett, Council President of the City Council. My name is James opioid crisis, long before state and federal governments declared the opioid crisis a public health emergency. Under the direction of Chief Ford, the Fire Department has taken steps to form partnerships with the Baltimore City Health Department, other city agencies, and private organizations to provide some of the following. One of the first programs was mentioned earlier was the Leave Behind, Alexone, and Narcan Program. Just in the month of August, we gave out 55 kits. What we actually do is leave the kits behind with people that are at risk or family members or other users. So far, since the inception of the program in 2018, we actually have left behind over 1,500 kits or 3,000 doses of naloxone that far outweighs or outsizes any other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland. A partnership was also established in April of 2018 with the Stabilization Center to allow patients with a substance use disorder to be transported to a specialty center instead of a revolving door of an emergency room. It's been very successful and there's going to be some additional changes with that with the upcoming ET3 program through CMS. Finally, we also are doing a grant-funded partnership with people, encouraging people to link individuals that are seeking treatment with resources in near real time. It's apparent that we need to continue supporting our programs that have a proven track record of successes, like the Needle Exchange Program, reevaluating programs with limited or no success, and to use an outside-the-box thinking approach to how we can continue to address the current and future needs of our citizens during this crisis. The Needle Exchange Programs have been working throughout the city for a number of years. I really didn't realize it had been around since before I came in the Fire Department. They promote involving public health of our visitors and residents while reducing HIV and sharing of dirty needles, offering counseling and treatment services if requested. The Fire Department recommends supporting this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the committee for the Fire Department? Okay, none. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, do we have a representative on for the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice?
Hi, this is Kamala Govan, Director of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. Good afternoon and thank you for having me. Is it afternoon yet? It's morning. Good morning. And thank you for having me on the panel. Similar to Director Wirtzberger, right now, I would say the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice doesn't have a role in this at present. But by listening to the different presentations, I think it's clear that there are opportunities to collaborate and also for MLCJ to be part of discussions following this as far as decriminalization and also how we could support with some of our programs. And maybe there's intersection there to reach different communities and individuals. And so for instance, with our Safe Streets Program, we have recently had a conversation about connecting with the Health Department about their syringe services. And so looking forward to following up on that. I did speak briefly to Dr. Sarasa about that and she directed me to connect with Dr. Cargill. So this is, these are things that we have been thinking about. And if there are conversations passed today about some of the decriminalization aspects, you know, I would love to be a part of that conversation. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Are there questions for the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice? Okay, none. Thank you. All right, next we have Representative from the Baltimore City Law Department.
Hi, Mr. Chair, this is Hillary Rulie from the Law Department. We stand by our report.
Okay, I thought you were going to say, I was going to say I don't see the Law Department working on this. All right, our next group are going to be panel of folks to talk about the harm reduction. And I guess I'll hand it over to you, Rajani. It looks like there's videos playing and presentations and all that, so I hand it over to you to take this panel from me.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. Hello, everyone. I am Rajani Gudlevaletti. You're all hearing me okay? Now, it's technical stuff, so I want to make sure we're all present. I know it's been a long hearing. We appreciate you all. So yes, I am Rajani Gudlevaletti. I use she/her pronouns. I am a resident of District Four and we will miss Councilman Henry. And I'm also the Director of Mobilization for Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. And so in this capacity, I oversee and coordinate our harm reduction, public policy efforts, which are guided by the voices of community advocates, activists, and leaders. And so while I can speak forever, if anybody knows me, I can talk forever about the benefits of harm reduction and social justice. I'm actually really grateful that with permission from Committee Chair Burnett and the Council President's Office, we actually have some, collected some pre-recorded testimony from community members and outreach workers who were unable to be here in person, either because life is chaotic and unstable, but these services are amazing and people wanted to provide their voices here, or because we have outreach workers who are literally right now providing these services out in community. If you meet any of these folks out, if you want to go hang out, out in 25th Street in Greenmount, I know you could probably meet Dave over there. So I'm going to play a couple of videos, hopefully, and we are going to cross our fingers that this will work. I promise these are not epic, long documentaries. These are short videos. So I am going to try to figure out this. Hopefully the sound will work, but please let me know if you're not hearing it. All right, so. Sorry, one second. We're getting there. Okay.
It's like the video's playing, but I don't hear any sound.
All right. Ms. Cullens, is there any way I can address that?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Because the video is not on mute. It's showing that it should be playing.
Okay, let's see. Again, I appreciate everyone's, everyone's. One second.
Hi, Rajani. Sometimes if you click on the three dots, it tells you where your audio is coming from. And so you can switch audio and I'll help.
Yeah, thank you. I think I just figured that one out, but hopefully, hopefully this is it. All right, I will play a second and then see if that's working. Is that working? Okay, it was also honestly a little hard to hear, but this is a community member from Hamden, who basically, I will just say, was really willing to stop by our site there. Our site being Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition, works with St. Luke's Church in Hamden to provide services. And so this is a community member who stopped by and said, hey, I want to provide some testimony because I support this. They provide hygienic supplies and smiling faces. So that's what this person was saying, in case anybody missed that one. You're seeing, I don't know if you were seeing my little hedgehog. Let me see. All right, I want to play one, a couple more. Again, thank everybody for their patience. This is our, one of our community outreach coordinators, Ricky Morris, who is doing work with, who works with us and does a lot of our service work. So let me see.
Okay, go. Hi, my name is Ricky Morris. I'm an outreach coordinator at Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. I'm here to talk about the syringe services that me and my wife provide in the off-the-sand-town neighborhood where I've grown up basically all my life and love giving back to the neighborhood. And we try to provide the syringe services like here outside our house and down at Simmons Church along with Pastor Simmons. We've been having a working relationship with the church for years and we try to keep our pulse on the community, make sure everybody is taking it COVID safe, taking it seriously and being as safe as they possibly can, wearing their masks, getting their NAR, we're making sure we give them their NAR, safe supply kits, everything that they may need to be safer in the community and know that we are out there in these trying times to help them keep safe, give them a place to dispose their, their old needles and just let them know that, yes, there are people out there that do care about them and would definitely add access to different items that can reduce fatal overdoses and different health concerns such as HIV and hepatitis C. And we are a neighborhood twenty syringe service. And yeah, that's what I would like you guys to know.
I always feel Mr. Morris needs a round of applause every time, so I hope everyone is giving him that. So yep, as he mentioned, we partner with Simmons Memorial Church in Penn North, as well as another agency that he has had a strong relationship with is IBR Reach, Reach Health Services, which provides a myriad of health services, physical health care, mental health care, behavioral health.
physical health care, mental health care, behavioral health, as well as methadone medication and other medications. So, Dr. Engvild Olson from IBR is also provided a testimony that I will play right now. I'm getting so much better at this, everybody. It's great. Okay. Okay, go ahead. Good morning. My name is Dr. Engvild Olson. I am a resident of Baltimore City. I live in the Mount Washington area. I'm also the Medical Director for the Institutes for Behavioral Resources, Reach Health Services, which is a comprehensive outpatient specialty addiction treatment center here in Baltimore. And I wanted to talk a little bit about our experience with harm reduction, particularly now in this COVID era. We partnered with Baltimore City Harm Reduction Coalition very early on during the COVID epidemic when they came to us and said that unfortunately, they had to close their doors and were very concerned that they were not going to be able to continue to provide services the way that they have been to individuals with substance use disorders and individuals who use drugs. And because we provide a range of different services, including opioid treatment medications such as methadone and buprenorphine and injectable mellexone. We treat hepatitis C. We have an intensive outpatient program, so a range of services. We really wanted to do what we could to make sure that the folks that we see and others who may be accessing our services could continue to get the harm reduction services that Baltimore City Harm Reduction Coalition provides. So, since March, we have been distributing syringe service kits to patients of IBR Reach. We have distributed over 150 of them. And it has really allowed us to not only continue to provide these vital services that reduce hepatitis C and HIV transmission, that also help people manage and feel safe from some of the negative consequences of drug use. But it also has enabled us to make connections for our patients to be Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition and continue that connection so that they know that when BHRC is able to really open their doors again for all the great, great harm reduction services that they provide, that our patients know and feel secure that those services will be there. We also have been able to then engage our staff in more of the harm reduction and overdose prevention work. This has really been something that our staff has taken to with gusto because they see the ravages of substance use disorders, particularly opioid use disorder, every day. And we really, really, particularly during this time of COVID, need to make sure that we can keep people as safe as possible so that they can live to see the next day. One of our outreach workers has now been able to actually identify early cellulitis, early skin infections that patients may be coming with, such that we are able to then get better care for them, engage them in medical care, and really provide that entree into community-based harm reduction, medical treatment, and treatment for their substance use disorders, as well as really paying attention to all of the social determinants of health that Baltimore City Harm Reduction Coalition is also so focused on. So, I appreciate the time allotted to me this morning, and I really just wanted to provide my support and some information about the valuable, valuable, and invaluable services the community-based harm reduction organizations, such as Baltimore City Harm Reduction Coalition, provide. And I just have one other video that I'm gonna play, but I just wanted to say, you know, I really am grateful for Dr. Olson sharing that context when it comes to working with, and when we say community-based partnerships, you know, it is community-based organizations, right? And that also means clinics and providers and places where people feel welcome and feel that they are going to feel non-judgment. And that is clearly a place where IBR Reach, Reach Health Services, where people feel that. And just to add a couple clarifying points, I know Dr. Olson had said that BHRC had closed our doors, and there were various things. I just want to clarify that it was that there was the Baltimore City Health Department's Needle Exchange Program during the COVID-19, totally understandably, we all had to make some shifts around how we can be out in community. And so, I think IBR was near a spot, or they had some sort of relationship that I honestly cannot speak to too well, but with Baltimore City Health Department. So, it was actually, when she said harm reduction closed our doors, she was actually talking about, it was a misstatement. It was that there weren't needle exchange services near IBR anymore. And so, BHRC and IBR decided to build a collaborative, a partnership, to meet that gap, to fill that gap. And so, that was the clarification there. BHRC's doors are open, as we're saying, and by doors, we mean we are going out and meeting people where they're at, as we know. So, one last video that I will play for you all and then turn it over is aforementioned Dave Fell. He is one of our outreach workers who is currently doing outreach. And so, I'm gonna play a two-minute-long video from him and then turn it over to the rest of the folks on the panel. One day. Okay, can I have your audio?
Hello, my name is Dave Fell. I use "he" in its pronouns, and I started at BHRC as the policy term back in December, and it turned into the outreach banter because of the arrival of COVID-19 in Baltimore. So, since March, our street-based outreach has seen 300-plus folks per week. We've distributed thousands of singly used PPT items, more than 400 bottles of locally produced hand sanitizer, more than 700 handmade cloth masks, thousands of items to make drug use and sex safer for unstably housed people, and more food, snacks, juice, and water, and just like general substance items, substance items, more of that than we can count. And in return, we've received a lot of positive feedback, negative feedback, elbow bumps, you know, air high fives, all of those, all of those good things. Personally, I love providing these services and encouraging and bringing out of people genuine and direct human connection, especially with people and populations that are used to being judged just for being existence. Folks that we see in our services are generally guarded at first, but often will open up and they will get to a place where they feel comfortable telling us actual truths about their life, about their experiences, about their struggles, but also their joy. And for me, that is a huge part of why I love doing this work, because I love participating in other people's joy and helping them get past the hard things so that they can, you know, experience more joy. And doing this at a local neighborhood level is so super important because we can all make a difference in our own neighborhoods. And the way we run our programs is that we are all on a horizontal plane. There's not a hierarchy in the neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood that I do outreach. One of the best examples of folks displaying trust in us as an organization providing these services is that one of our locations, we premiered safer smoking kits for folks who use the pipe, and we ended it out to folks with just a gentle ask of if you could give us a little bit of feedback, that would be amazing. And the next week, people were coming and giving us all the feedback that we asked for and more. And it was really helpful because they were telling us the truth. They were like, this will work because of my experience in this, or this won't work because of this. And we really broke down a lot of boundaries and let people tell us what they need so that we can design our services to respond to the needs of the community that we are serving, not just have a sort of retail version of our services. So, thank you for listening. I am on video because as you're watching this, I am actually out in Greenmount West and Barclay doing said outreach. I really appreciate y'all's time and thank you for letting me share.
Thank you all so much for listening to those videos. We do have several more that I am not gonna play right now. We do have time for public comment. I will absolutely try to play them then because that is what people had hoped for. I also recognize we're close to two hours, so again, your patience is amazing. Just to kind of wrap it up, it's really never been clearer that we need community-based programs in partnership with communities, neighbors, and local leaders to provide options, options in addition to naloxone. We know that naloxone is a really a miracle drug, science at its finest, and naloxone alone cannot support and end this overdose epidemic, right? Syringe services, untroubled overdose epidemic, as well as HIV and so many, so many issues that everyone's been talking about today. And options that include welcoming faces and, and all honesty, that don't come with that because of history of harm. Community-based organizations, community members don't necessarily always come with that harm. That is the trouble with some of the times that we're trying to really build connection is to know that tension is there. Let's all really try to work together more and more. So, we appreciate all of the needle exchange programs' efforts, everyone who's spoken today. I appreciate you. Thank you. I'll pass it on to my colleagues.
Thank you. And if we aren't able to get to all of the videos, please, allow me to say, in addition to that, please just send them to me, and we can get them out to the committee either way. All right, so next, we have Pastor Jim Murtor, St. Luke's Church on the Avenue.
Good morning. It's still morning, in case you were wondering. My name is Jim Muratori, and I am the pastor at St. Luke's Church on the Avenue and the co-founder of The Avenue Drop-In, which began about, it started formulating in 2017 after a lot of complaining from neighbors and community members about syringes being discarded in the parks and in the alleys and drug use in the streets. And, you know, we had initially gathered community stakeholders together to try to figure out what to do. And at that point, I'd been introduced to Derek Hunt there and to Lisa Parker over at the Health Department, who came. And in the room with Merchant Association and Community Council members and other stakeholders and property owners in the community to explain what you're really hearing now. And that began a process of growth in terms of what we did as a community. The Syringe Exchange Program was a doorway into engaging this particular community in the Hamden neighborhood. If you aren't that familiar with the neighborhood, it's a small neighborhood. It's very insular. Most of the people in this population we're serving don't go out of the neighborhood. And which means that unless there are services in the neighborhood, they're not getting them. So, most of the people that we serve at the Drop-In are homeless or housing insecure. They are definitely food insecure and all have these needs that in a neighborhood like Hamden, which is not one short of resources, can't meet the needs of this population. And so, this doorway has opened up to bringing people who are typically marginalized within our community, kept out of places of business, kept out of local places to go, and gives them a place to build their network, to build their community. You know, we operate as a community-based space. We have members of the church, members of other churches, members, neighbors, who come in and volunteer, and neighbors who know the people who are participating in the program. And so, come, we provide food. We have opportunity to sit and to be together, and especially in the wintertime to get warm, and providing all of these things that are needed, you know, from food to basic hand warmers and other stuffs. We also have a thrift shop that we provide clothing and whatnot out of. And none of this would be possible without the Syringe Service Program. It would not have been possible because it is essentially the draw that gets people tools that they need to come and to, as a byproduct of this service, build the relationships that are supporting them in their daily lives. We have been really fortunate to work with the Health Department and, you know, for the first two years of this program. In that time, we've also managed to create partnerships with the healthcare for the homeless and people encouraging people. We've had a partnership with Hope Springs, which has helped us to retain grant funding for supplies and food and things of that nature. And the, but it's all around this service. And I know when COVID hit and the Health Department had to step back, BHRC, Baltimore Health, Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition stepped in and has really kept this going. Even though we've had to cut down the number of hours that we interact with people, they keep showing up. And they keep showing up because it's essential and because it's people that are happy to see them. So much of the time, you know, they're not the people that others want to see. And here, they're greeted and people are excited to see them. We're glad when they come back. And, you know, we had a couple recently who just had a set of twins who've been coming to the program for, you know, the last two years. And there's been some really wonderful stories, which hopefully, some others will get to tell you, that we're getting to see because of the relationships formed in this setting. We also get to work one-on-one with people going through their own process, their own process of getting into recovery, coming out and relapsing, and just walking with them the whole time. We have been able to shelter some of the individuals during Code Blue. And for better and worse, there have been many issues that have come along with that. But they have a group of people that they know, no matter what, they are there for them. And because of that, they're better off moving their life forward and finding space, finding security and stability for themselves. So, it's because of these programs, these programs, that our neighborhood has seen a drastic reduction in the discarded syringes, which is increasing the safety of our playgrounds and the schoolyards. And to be honest with you, one of the big concerns that the neighborhood had was that we are located four houses away from the elementary school. We are right on the corner of 36th Street. We are on the avenue. We are in the main space where, you know, there are residents, there are businesses, there are children in the school, and all of the fears that everyone had have been squashed. Because the reality is, is that these are our neighbors, and this is their community too. And they want a good and healthy, happy neighborhood, just like everyone else. And because, you know, we've created a space where they can come and use the bathroom, where they can come and get a hot meal, where they can come and be not, you know, not lingering on the street for a while. not lingering on the street for a while, then that has, that has actually been a source of, of accomplishment for our community as a whole. Now, COVID has changed a lot of things, but, but the, the the process that we've started building up this program and building the relationships with these community organizations is, is essential to, to the health and wellbeing of, of the city. So I think that's all that I can, can say. I, I hope we'll get to hear some of the other stories.
Thank you. Thank you for the testimony. And I did want to lift up something that you, you said about folks not, that services aren't in community, people won't go. That's something that I've had a lot of conversation about with neighborhood leaders in my district as it relates to this, this topic in particular. And when we talk about the placement of services in communities and issues with transportation, but this is one that I think you were spot on, that it's, it has to be something that the outreach needs to be in the communities where the services are in order for them to be successful.
They're not going anywhere else.
Yeah. And I, and I had a constituent and community leader who had a family member that struggled with this exact issue. And when I raised that point, her response was like, yeah, you're right. I didn't even think about it that way. And had shared that she had to see this family member on the bus stop every day on a red school. So obviously that carried its own sort of stigma for her as a child. So she got it and she's on board now with, with these ideas. So thank you for raising that. Thank you for your, your hard work. Next we have Alex Wilson.
Hi, everybody. I'm Alex. I do want to start by saying thank you to everybody who's spoken before. I really appreciate being in this space and having this opportunity to speak about these things that are very important to me. So I am Alex Wilson. As I mentioned, I use she/her pronouns. I work for Spark. Spark is a harm reduction organization over in Big Town. And we serve the needs of folks who sell sex, folks who use drugs, and like a myriad of really comprehensive ways. So we have this really awesome team of folks who are always picking out services. I do want to shout out my team right now. Susan's here. We all heard her earlier. We have a really awesome outreach team who has, through COVID, been really giving services for our clients, which is really amazing. I'm really excited to part of that. But shifting forward to why we're here today, it strikes me that a lot of the people who have spoken before me, and I'm sure will keep happening, have been talking about community, right? This is a word that's come up several times. And I really want to go back to how Council President Brandon Scott opened this by saying that we are here to give people support that folks need, right? We're here to give community solutions to people because we're talking about our community members. Not only do we, as service providers, live in these communities, care about these communities, but these are our peers, these are our friends. And that's why we want to be able to serve them in these ways and give people the things they need and help them access the things they need. So it's also about affirming people's personal power. As Susan mentioned earlier, speaking for Spark specifically, we serve people who are multiply marginalized. So a lot of people at this at this next point whereby they might be experiencing homelessness, they might be selling sex, they might be using drugs, whether they have a chaotic relationship with other people or not. So we have these people who are multiply marginalized, they might also be disabled, they might come from racial backgrounds that are marginalized and oppressed, right? We have this really interesting opportunity to serve people who have these accessies, excuse me, of oppression bearing down on them in multiple ways all at one time. So, oh, sorry, I lost my train of thought. But like Natania had mentioned earlier, we're trying to give people community that isn't conditional. We're trying to give people services that don't come with supplies, right? A lot of the time, things can replicate harm because people who have these feelings and their access to services. We really want to lean into community and communal power and communal solutions. Spark has this really awesome collaborative relationship with BHRC that enables us to administer services to people, that enables us to help serve people and get out syringes and the things that people need. And it's not just syringes, like someone mentioned, it's also wound care items, right? And Regine showed us that really awesome comprehensive list earlier that showed us how each of these tools helps mitigate harm in specific ways, right? So it's not just like I said about syringes, it's also about giving people staring water, because people don't always have access to water. If someone's trying to drop from a puddle, that's going to increase their harm, right? And the next thing implies harm reduction or not in the business of increasing harm. We're really trying to help people meet people where they are and help them to make decisions that best serve them. There's this really pernicious misconception about people who use drugs, that people who use drugs don't care about their health, that they're very selfish. I can tell you, being someone who works directly with people who use drugs, working in outreach, nothing could be further from the truth. And people are empowered to make positive decisions. People are empowered to have tools to help them. They care very much about their health, right? So this is again, like I said, about giving people communal solutions. This is about communal care. We're trying to take care of our neighbors, our friends, our peers, and just help people be their best selves, right? Help people be healthy, help people be happy, improve people's quality of life, and also deferring to individuals and recognizing that people are often the best to make decisions for themselves about their goals, their health, their relationship. We really just want to, like I said, give people tools to do those things and affirm people's personal power. One of the things that I really like about working at Spark, which I really like about the services, is that it's not just these concrete tools that we've been talking about that help people. It's these intangible, in-concrete things, right? It's this conversation that we have with people, where we see the nice human. A lot of the time, stigma is really disgusting. That's how I'll say that. I want to be succinct. But people really deny the humanity of people in very disgusting ways all throughout the day. And so it really hurts me that sometimes folks come in to receive services from me and they break down because maybe this is the first conversation they've had all day. Maybe this is, this is the first time someone's really treated them with respect, right? And as much as it brings joy to give that to somebody, it just like I said, makes me sad that these are community members, these are neighbors who are being treated disrespectfully or being mocked, degraded, harmed by, by stigma, right? By these things that are oppressing them. And so, like I said, one of the things that I really, really appreciate are those intangible things, the conversation that happens, the smile, the trust. You know, I remember there was a particular individual who came into Spark and they were expressing a bit of trepidation that they had around coming in and saying, you know, I, I wasn't sure. I have had incidences before where I've been incarcerated. I want to make sure I'm not going to get in trouble. You're not going to get in trouble here. You can have a snack. We got some coffee, tea in the drop-in if you want it. We're just here for you, right? And so, like I said, it's really those conversations, those things that we can give people, creating a safe space for people where someone can come in, sit down, have some water, talk to their friends, watch a movie, color in a book, right? Things that just really make people happy, just giving someone a space to be, right? A lot of the time, people don't have that. It sounds very simple, right? Like a space to be. But when I'm bored, what do I do? I mean, this is COVID, so I don't go where I normally go, right? But I go to my office or I go to my room or I go talk to my mother. I go to talk to my friend. A lot of people don't have that. They don't have a space where they can go to feel safe, to feel comfortable, right? And not only do they not have spaces where they feel comfortable, there's like the presence of threats, people who are, you know, stigmatizing them, harming them, whatever. So it's nice to be able to give people this space where they can feel at ease, they can feel comfortable to kind of lighten their load, you know, shrug their shoulders a little bit and just feel happy, feel affirmed, you know? Let's take it affirmation to Spark, as corny as that might sound. I'm an artsy person, so I'm a little bit corny. I apologize. But yeah, like I said, if I can suffice it all in one way, I do truly believe that communal solutions require communal care, right? And that's why we're all in community together. And thank you for leaving the space to speak. And I like working here from everybody else here today on the phone.
Thank you. And thank you for your advocacy. Are there questions from the committee? And again, thank you all for the presentation and for your hard work and candid opinions on what's going on in our city. Definitely appreciated. All right. Looks like the last I have on this panel is Dr. Adrian Trustman.
Hi. Can you all hear me? Hi. My name is Dr. Adrian Trustman. I am speaking on behalf of Healthcare for the Homeless today. So I'm a, first of all, thank you to everyone for listening. I know it's been kind of a long haul. It's already much hours in, so I will do my best to be brief. So I am a primary care doctor. I've been a primary care doctor at Healthcare for the Homeless for the last five years. And I've been the chief medical officer here at Healthcare for the Homeless for the last few months. I started in February, right before COVID hit. And I wanted to talk a little bit about our plans and my vision for syringe services as an extension of our current harm reduction services at Healthcare for the Homeless. So we've applied to become a syringe services program. We would be the first federally qualified health center in Maryland, but there are many in the country that are doing this. So as a federally qualified health center, we already offer a really broad range of medical behavioral health, case management, psychiatry, addiction type services. And we serve, we serve about 10,000 people, individuals per year. So we reach, we reach a large number of people. We participated, we, we worked with the state last year, my, my predecessor, because the laws in Maryland didn't really allow a federally qualified health center to provide services in the way that we would need to. So to incorporate them into our primary care and behavioral health services. So we worked really hard to make changes that would allow us to provide those services. And, and then we sort of, you know, COVID hit and we sort of dropped it a little bit. We then became aware that people were accessing our services because there were changes in what was available around the city. So we saw a big uptick in people accessing our services for treatment for opioid use disorder. And the one thing we are lacking there is syringe services. And then we saw that that became less available for a period of time during COVID. So we started working towards applying to become a syringe service provider. And the way, the way I envision providing the services to really embed it in with the rest of our services. So we already are taking care of wounds. We're already screening, diagnosing, and treating HIV and hepatitis C. We already provide lots of addiction treatment by prescribing Suboxone, by offering groups. And, but we don't, what we don't do is provide syringe services yet. So we see that as a really logical extension of our current services. And so we've embarked in that process. We envision doing this as part of a regular visit. So if someone is coming to me, a primary care provider, and identifies that they're using needles and syringes for drug use, I would be able to, while treating their diabetes or their hypertension, I would be able to provide them with, you know, needles and syringes and any of the other supplies that they need to take care of themselves. And we've definitely identified this as a need amongst our patients who are already established. And, and I would echo what others have said about, about people who use drugs really caring quite a lot about their health. And I'll give an example of a client who I saw the other day who just achieved control of her diabetes through using insulin very successfully. She's been working for years at it, but she's also in the middle of a relapse with alcohol and heroin. And so it's really important for her to, she wants to feel successful, not just with her diabetes, but with her other medical conditions. And that, that for her includes her heroin use. And so I'm, I really, I'm invested in preventing her from getting hepatitis C or HIV, even though I know she's at risk. And so syringes would be potentially one way to do that for her. I will close there with any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Trustman. Are there questions from the committee? Hearing none. Thank you. All right. So we are going to move, that's the end of the panels. We are now going to move to public comment. I'm going to walk through some instructions. I do know we have a, a few folks that have already signed up and we'll, we'll start with the folks who've already signed up. And I think a few of those are going to be via video. But I do want for folks who may not have signed up ahead of time, going to walk through what public testimony looks like on an online hearing. For those who are signed in using the computer, are you, in order to let us know that you would like to give testimony if you aren't already signed up, please use the raise hand function to indicate you want to testify. And the way to find that is at the bottom of your screen, you should see a, oh wait, that's not it. You should see a participant list. And that should allow you on the right-hand side, and there should be a button that says raise hand. And you can use that to alert us that you would like to speak. Yeah, on the right-hand side where it says panelists or participants, there's a little hand, small hand function. And if you're looking at it, like you can see, I just read mine and see if you do what it looks like. We will go through all of the online first, and then we will move to phones. Attendees who are on the line, you'll hear two beeps when you are unmuted. If you wish to testify, when you hear those beeps, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If you don't want to speak and you're just calling in to listen to the hearing, just let us know. And say that you don't want to give testimony after you hear the beeps and that's fine. All right. So with that, I'm going to, we're going to start with, I have a Q. Allen. And it looks like there's going to be a video of Q. Allen's testimony.
Hello, this is Regine from Baltimore Harm Reduction. Hi. We've decided for the sake of time to, to actually just skip the videos. I will send it to you, Council, Councilmember Burnett. So we can, I believe the, the first on the list, the first person who is here live might be Owen O'Keefe from Baltimore Harm Reduction. So we can skip over.
Cool. Can everyone hear me? Awesome. Yeah, as Regine said, my name is Owen O'Keefe. I use he/him/his pronouns. And I'm a community outreach coordinator with Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. So I'm not going to take up too much time today, but some of the things I just really want to focus in on are the use of syringes for people who are not actively using drugs such as heroin or opioids, the importance of expanding syringe service programs. We can meet a variety of needs in the city. Certainly, people have testified here today that there are a lot of people who need syringes as far as overdose prevention and reducing the transmission of bloodborne diseases as it's related to drug use. I particularly have spent most of my time doing syringe exchange with folks who use them for hormones, particularly transgender women in the city of Baltimore, who often find it difficult to access medical care in addition to even accessing the right syringes at a CVS or other pharmacy if they do get that care. Frequently, people don't have the right gauges, the right lengths. Ordering them can be difficult or you will get straight up denied. So frequently, people will come to the syringe exchange program saying that they have hormones and that they need syringes simply to do that, not even covering drug use or other things. They don't feel comfortable going to the city needle exchange van because they don't feel like their needs are appropriate for the services there. They might have trauma or other experiences that makes it so that they're not super interested in waiting in a line with folks who might harass them, who might remind them of people who have treated them poorly in the past, such as like family members or people they've interacted with on the street. It does not feel like a safe environment for them. This sort of echoes back to the testimony that Alex Wilson gave as far as having specific places for different people to go to use syringes. So sex workers, for example, are another group of intersecting marginalized identities where going to a very sort of like stop-and-shop needle exchange program might not be the best fit. There's a variety of services and care that needs to come along with giving out those syringes. That really is needed. So honestly, that's like a lot of the focus I just wanted to bring up, that like we need to be really specific about the types of people who are receiving our services and make sure that we have enough programs to cater to their needs so that everyone's comfortable and people aren't falling into gaps despite there being certain programs. Go on to the next person.
Thank you, Owen. Next, we have Tricia Christensen. All right, you're up. I think we just need to unmute you. Are you able to unmute? Okay, perfect.
Hi, I am Tricia Christensen. I'm the policy manager with Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. I've had the, the pleasure of growing with BHRC over the last four years. So I actually started as a volunteer in 2016. And as funding has become available, I've grown into this role of policy manager where I've led our policy advocacy efforts and helped to build support for community-based harm reduction programs around the state. for community-based harm reduction programs around the state. Um, I'm going to be very brief. Uh, the brief point that I want to emphasize for you all is that what government does or does not do beyond the passage of helpful laws matters a lot. So in, in 2016 is when the, the statewide law passed to allow for expansion of syringe service programs, as you've already heard. The initial regulations that were written, and I understand this is at the state level, um, but the initial regulations that were written, were written in a way that was pretty easy for health departments to get on board, but it really did create barriers for entry for community-based organizations. Um, so as CBOs, we do have to get permission from local health departments to implement a program. Um, and health departments, they have a lot going on. They're not always quick to review. They're not always quick to respond. Um, and building that relationship really takes time. Um, as a smaller organization, we don't have a huge staff. Um, so when it comes to those reporting requirements that were initially written into regulations, those can be really burdensome. It can be really hard for us to gather all that data, put it into the right spreadsheet, get the reporting out. Um, it's just, it can be a big push. And, um, Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition has worked with MDH, the Maryland Department of Health, over the last several years to, to identify what of that reporting is actually necessary and try to loosen some of those requirements over the years. Additionally, as was mentioned before, um, there was no promise for funding for community-based organizations when all this started. And it's really just since mid-2020 that there's even been a mechanism for community-based organizations to request funding. Um, and that is thanks to several years of our advocacy. We really had to, uh, ask for that and push for it. Um, so while health departments around the state have been given funding from the beginning just to plan for services even, um, and then ongoing funding for implementation of services, um, it took until 2019 for the first community-based organizations in the state to be approved. Um, that's Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition and Charm City Care Connection. Um, and then each of our organizations has had to find our own funding to purchase the many supplies that we're wanting to give out. Um, as Harriet rightly said earlier, we're all, we're very scrappy. Uh, we've managed to scrape together donations and volunteers in order to sustain our services so far. Um, but the promise of that government funding and support is really what we need to expand services. Um, as you've heard testimony all day today about how wonderful the services are, how it's really important to have a variety of services, um, and in a variety of locations. Um, and it's that ongoing financial support, um, you know, uh, lowering of barriers and restrictions to getting into this kind of service work, um, that's so important. And that's all I wanted to share with you today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have, uh, Sam Kerr. All right, see you, Sam. Go for it. Look where you're unmuted.
Perfect. Hi, thanks everyone, um, for giving us the opportunity to be here today and speak about syringe service programs. I love the opportunity to give people context on what it is that I do on a regular basis. Um, I am a, hold on please. I am always really bad at remembering what my title is. I am a community outreach organizer for Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. Um, I don't remember my title for a whole slew of reasons. One of them being that I am more focused on the work that I'm doing than the title. So volunteer coordination for outreach has been a really big part of what I've done since COVID. Has kind of put us all in our homes. When we started to make, started to do more outreach, um, we needed somebody to put all that together. We don't have, we lack funding for like our own little paid task force um, to go out on the streets and do outreach. So I've been, uh, coordinating volunteers to do so, which looks like a lot of, hey, do you want to come and do this today? Um, which is something that I've gotten a lot better at over the last few months. Um, not something that has been super comfortable to do. But we have so many people that have graciously volunteered their time. I think Harriet mentioned about, uh, 12 to 15 people that on a regular basis are coming out and doing, are doing outreach. And we've had, uh, 10, 20, 30 more over the last span of time to do that. So that's one point that I wanted to talk about is that, um, you know, the volunteer coordination takes up a lot of time and a lot of energy. And it would be, you know, it'd be fabulous if we could have our own little like squad of people to go out and do that. Um, we have Dave, which is fabulous. Dave, Dave can stay. Um, you've heard from him earlier. Also, uh, I think that another point that I just wanted to bring up is that, being a community-based organization, I think, gives us a lot of different, a lot of different, like, unique opportunities. I think that everybody has spoken to it a little bit earlier, the relationship building. And I think that I want to bring up, uh, the base for that relationship building being that, uh, people don't trust hospitals, uh, people don't trust police, people don't trust EMS, um, people don't trust government. Uh, no shade, guys, but they're not, they're not really about it. Especially poor people and black people. There has just been years of stigma. There's been years of racism, white supremacy. All of those different things factor into the fact that people, uh, don't trust, um, a whole slew of people, um, a whole slew of different organizations. And being a community-based organization, uh, uniquely positions us to be able to step outside of that and say, hey, what is it that you need? Um, you know, Dave spoke about, um, putting together smoking kits and actually getting people to communicate honestly about their use and what is helpful and what's not helpful. And that is something that is not really, not really accessible, um, in those other areas. Um, the trust that we gain from the people that we're talking to is huge and, um, is also not just like us going out there to gain trust. It's because we, we love these people. We are these people. So I just wanted to put that out there, um, that that stigma that we talked about is definitely a part of it. Also, like, I just want to say that, um, like, in general, that this is, our SSP and our outreach is another way that we grab people and, um, have them join us in our, like, our advocacy efforts. So we do a lot of, like, Baltimore Harm Reduction and a lot of people on this call do a whole bunch of stuff. And one of the, one of the aspects that we have is advocacy. So we are going to session. Um, we'll see what that looks like this year. Um, I can only imagine. It will be very interesting. But we go to session, um, we, uh, we champion bills. We, um, we're really involved in that stuff. And what this SSP and this outreach allows us to do is connect with people on the ground that are using the services and invite them into those spaces, right? Um, testimony is given much like this, um, to people, um, to people that have the power to make really big decisions. And so we give people the opportunity to walk into those spaces and freely share, um, their experiences with the services, freely share and ask questions, like, ask, how can, how can we make this better for me and my family? And I think that's really important for a lot of different reasons. I think that that is a piece that can allow us to start to break down the stigma that is around like how people engage with government. It also gives people the opportunity to have their voice heard. Um, Alex was talking about autonomy. For me, like, this is that dignity piece, um, adding dignity, which we try to instill on a, on a everyday level, on a person-to-person level, and then on that like larger level of government. Because we don't need to be in a special space to give somebody respect and dignity. Um, but the more that we give people the opportunity to foster that, the more that grows and the better their quality of life is. So, you know, I just wanted to put all that stuff out there. I think that, um, I think that it's frequently awkward to have conversations like this in spaces where, um, you know, a lot of us, um, a lot of us might not be the people that are directly, uh, receiving the services. Some of us might be, some of us aren't. And I think that it's awkward to be in spaces like this and to speak for people, without giving them the chance to do so themselves. And so I'm really grateful that we've had a few people, a few like testimonies, like, this video testimonies of people that have the experience of, uh, receiving services from, um, needle exchange and the syringe service programs. Also, I think that it's awkward to be in these spaces and not, and bring up and not bring up the fact that, um, that it is uncomfortable for people to, to receive services due to, um, racism and white supremacy and patriarchy. Really, I think that one of the biggest things I want to emphasize is that, uh, the community-based organizations, the one that I'm a part of and the ones that, um, we work with, uh, do our own homework to try to, uh, break that stuff down in ourselves so that we can offer better services to the people around us. Uh, because we really care about, uh, the dignity and humanity of the people we're serving and of ourselves and the people that we work with. So, um, thanks y'all for like being here and staying with us. Honestly, like, I, uh, I have a disability that puts me to sleep, so I could never do what you guys do on a regular basis. So I commend you for sitting and listening and taking in all of this information. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, uh, definitely appreciate it. But again, this is incredibly helpful for us as policymakers to hear the feedback, hear the testimony, hear, um, from folks that are doing the work. Um, so definitely, uh, worth our time for sure. Um, so it looks like we have, I accidentally skipped over someone. My apologies. Uh, we have Cheryl, um, who looks like is a volunteer at St. Luke's Church.
Mr. Chair, I see her, Cheryl Conrad, on the attendees list. I don't know if that's her or not. Should I unmute her?
Hello. Yes, that is her. Thank you. Cheryl Conrad. Thanks, Ms. Collins. Can I, um, okay, great. Hello. So can you hear me? Yes, okay. Um, yay. Okay, so I go to St. Luke's Church and I'm a volunteer there. I've been there a year and a half. And we have partnered with so many of you groups that have spoken already. And I won't speak to the, to everything that you all have done in making the syringe exchange possible at St. Luke's other than to say, uh, we value each and everything that you do from the health department to, uh, the Baltimore, uh, Harm Reduction, to Healthcare for the Homeless, to Movable Feas. So many people have come and helped us. But what I want to speak to in just a short period of time is to talk with you about the, the piece of relationship that, that you all have made, um, reference to, but that really, I think, helps people to have life, to, to reach the life that they want. And so what I wanted to do was just quote, talk to you, uh, real quick about, uh, a conversation that I had this last week with this guy, we'll call him B. And he says, you know, I'm down to only one pill now. You know, and that's really good for me. You know, I'm no different. We're no different than anybody else. We just made some poor decisions. And it's gotten in the way of life. Every dollar you make is going to support your habit, and that's not life. And I just want to tell you this story so that I know that you all know the stories behind these people, but I just want to give you his words because what they speak to, to me is the piece that those of us who are involved in the greater community have time to, to, to address, to see people's value, to say, to say, yes, this is such an incredible victory that you, that you have done with, with this decrease in your drug use. Yes, this is still hard, what you have to go through. And as, um, Natanya said earlier, you know, to recognize that people sometimes may fail, you know? And so if folks do, we are there to be with them in this journey of up and down, to help them to get back to the life that they want to have, the life with their families, the life with, um, work, the life with having respect felt in themselves and respect felt from other people. And so the ways that, that we do that are, are sometimes so small. You know, we got money to, um, that was donated us to provide vouchers, um, in our thrift store. And so by doing that, what we could do is give people these vouchers so that they didn't have to come in with their hands out. You know, drug use, it robs you of money. It draws, it robs you of the effect of, of the ability to many times go into a store and hold yourself up and say, I want this, I want to pay for that. But by having these vouchers, people could come into the thrift store and they could come in and get clothes for job interviews or a belt to hold their pants up because now they've lost so much weight or a stuffed animal or game for a kid's birthday. And that feeling of feeling normal and just being able to go in and shop for household needs. We are all the same. And so sometimes in relationship, by helping people feel just the normalness of life, it can give people the steps that they, that the strength that they need to face what it is that they have to face in every day and to move to a more healthy way of existence, a more healthy life. I know, you know, I've, I've talked to people who, when they come into the syringe exchange, you know, sometimes they break down and they cry. And, um, you know, I think of one gal who was talking about how hard it was. And she was crying and, you know, weeks go by, weeks go by. And, um, this last weekend, this last week, I was talking to her partner and I said, you know, I haven't seen her for a little while. He goes, well, you know, she's, now she's in rehab. I mean, you know, it's, it's being with people through, through the hard times that sometimes gives them that little bit of strength, that little bit of bravery, that little bit more to move on to that next step that they might choose to take. And so I just want to talk about that relationships are important. Being there when we see somebody on the street who you haven't seen before for a while and saying, hey, I haven't seen you. And they just say, well, I just got out of jail, you know? And it's like, oh, wow, you know, so what can we do for you? Where are you at? You know, or, or celebrate with people about the, as Jim was talking about earlier, about twins being born. Because it's in life and feeling alive that sometimes people are able to take better use of all of the things, the resources that you guys offer. And so, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for each and everything that each of you do.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so I think that's looking through the, uh, list. I don't see any more hands raised. So Margaret, do you want to walk through the callers?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's one in attendance, and I'm going to unmute them. They just left, Mr. Chair. They just left the meeting, so there's no other callers.
Okay, okay. All right. So we, I want to hold for one second because we were, uh, Councilmember Clark had a, uh, personal situation to deal with, but she did want to rejoin us to vote on this. Um, if you can give me a second, I want to reach out to her, let her know. We are about to vote on the resolution. So give me one second. and let her know. We are allowed to vote on the resolution. So give me one second. Okay, so uh, she's going to be logging on in a second. Um, and I would also note, I did receive a message. I can't respond to it for some reason. Someone wanted a list of all of the speakers today, so for all of you who are maybe interested in that list, um, I'm gonna just throw it in the chat because I can't respond to the individual who um, asked for it for some reason. Okay, that's what that is. All right. Okay, thank you for joining us, uh, Councilmember Clark. Um, and I just want to again, um, oh, no, that, that concludes our public testimony portion of the hearing. The committee went out and hosted the vote. Sorry, gotta follow the rules here. Um, I want to uh, thank all of you for joining us uh, this morning, um, and for all of your hard work. Again, it is not lost on us, uh, the challenging work that you do, but uh, it is very much necessary. Um, and I want to thank all of you for sharing your perspectives, uh, whether they are uh, good news or bad for how things are going. Uh, it is helpful for this committee, um, and for all of our agencies who've been on the line the whole time, uh, taking that feedback. Um, and this is a critical conversation for us to be having at this time. So again, thank you for making time for us to help educate us on what you're doing. Um, with that, we are going to move the resolution out. So this will not be the last time we have this conversation, but we are only two months left in the term. Otherwise, I'd say, let's just keep here and back to it. That's not gonna be possible. Uh, we will revisit. Is there a motion to vote on Council Resolution 20 dash 01 AR?
So moved, second.
I heard the second, but who did? I think it's, it's all right. Okay. That's all right. Uh, so I think it was moved by Congress. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Congress, second. Burnett is a yes, Councilmember.
What's that? Can you hear me?
We're gonna focus vote.
Is it my turn? Oh, it's him. Who, did you call me?
All right, I called Councilmember Henry. Okay, Councilmember Henry, the yes. Uh, Councilmember Clark?
First of all, let me apologize. A death above staff members immediate family occurred and I had to get off and handle it. But I want to say that I remember very well when this started and Delegate Salima Marriott fought the good fight when this was a controversial issue and helped us win it here in Baltimore City. I am proud and pleased to vote yes on this continuation. And whatever the problems, we know that they will be resolved because they have to be. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rising?
Yes.
Hey, and uh, Councilmember Sliper? Councilmember Sliper, are you with us? Um, I can see him log going. Technical issues. Yeah, I wasn't able to reach him. Councilmember Sliper, are you able to hear me? Okay. Um, well, fortunately, I guess put him as absent. Uh, there are no um, response. All right, um, so uh, this motion has passed. The
I, I believe that he lifted it being here, he would just be passing on the vote.
Ah, correct, okay. Okay, thanks. So put him as a pass. Um, the motion has passed. Uh, the resolution will be placed on second reader on Monday, October 5th, 2020. The full council review and take a vote at that time. Uh, I want to again, thank everyone for attending the hearing, and this has concluded this, this afternoon. So thank you all. Have a good day.